City Council workshop to order.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mrs. Billings here. Mr. Palom.
Here.
Mr. Siriani.
Here.
Dr. Selly.
Here.
Mrs. Bastelli.
Here.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the discussion of the vacation of a portion of Lake Avenue. Mark Steinberg, excuse me, will be presenting.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Mark Steinberg, on behalf of Joey and Joseph. Is that on? Am I needed?
Yes.
Yes, please. Is it on?
No.
No?
Good evening. Thank you. Mark Steinberg, on behalf of Joseph and Esther Diane, and they live in Elveron, and they are at 800 Bauer Avenue.
Are they here tonight?
No. Actually, they're out of town.
Okay.
I've been working on this for about six months, and let me just pass out. This is an aerial map of the area in question. And does it go on there?
I have one on here.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
So, so council, this is the area, and this is Woodgate Avenue.
Correct.
The Woodgate Avenue Bridge would be here, the lake, the park, and this would be that strip of right away.
Right. Mr. and Mrs. Diane own the first house that you see and the second house. They own, they purchased the house that fronts on Woodgate also. So, they own both properties along what would be Lake Avenue, and one of their houses fronts on Woodgate, and the other one fronts on Bauer. They plan to remove both houses and build a larger house, probably with some amenities, including a tennis court. When they first decided to do this, they contacted Mr. Turner, because what they would have is three front yards, and they would have to comply with your zoning ordinances for three front yards, which requires a substantial setback. And then it was suggested that we should approach council and see if they would be interested in vacating that portion of Lake Avenue, which has no plans for development. About six months ago, we started this project, and there was an ordinance that sort of was semi-drafted by council, and what happened was that we had some objections. We had two objections, one from New Jersey American Water and one from the Long Branch Sewer Authority. Sewer Authority is on the other side of Lake Avenue. They own that property and everything along the back, I believe, which is wooded. I've since spoken to Mr. Benello and their engineer, and we have worked out, and we have an easement in place. The water company was concerned that they have a water line. Let's strike that. I mean, the sewer company was concerned because they have a sewer line running down the middle of Lake Avenue, and we have agreed and we have formalized an easement agreement with the sewage authority to permit them access to that line. We don't plan on building on that Lake Avenue area, but it would be our side yard. And we've also contacted New Jersey American Water Company, Mr. Kevin Keane, and we have worked out with them an easement agreement for the water line, which is closer to the property than in the center of Lake Avenue, and we have given, and we will give an easement to the New Jersey American Water Company for access to their water line along the property. There are no other objections, and I understand that the city has no plans in developing that street, and we would request that an ordinance be introduced, hopefully, at the next council session, to vacate that parcel. It would then go 50 percent to the Dianes, who own the two adjacent properties to the west, and the other half would go to the Long Branch Sewer Authority.
Can you show us visually the portion?
Can you just stand up? Yeah, sure. Of what we want, we're asking to be, oh, sure. The Dianes live currently here. They've purchased this house. They plan to remove them. This is the sewage authority, and this is the area of Lake Avenue that's not in use. It's not developed.
How far does it extend to the south beyond the pavement?
How far are you asking that to go?
It stops here.
I think it's a 50-foot right away. Is that the question?
That's west. How far south are you asking to come?
South is, south is that way.
South is?
Yes. Woodgate runs this way. Okay. So, the south would be down.
So, where are you?
This would be just this strip right here, from here to here.
So, it's going to stop here?
Go on the straight across.
Straight across. It would just be this.
Continue what you have to draw.
It's halfway down the property.
Well, right now, that ends here for logistic purposes.
But it's the width of, it's the width of that draw.
It's the width, the width of the street, but again, 50 percent of it goes to the two adjacent property owners, so the property owner below, which I guess would be to the...
You said the sewer authority. I don't say the sewer authority can own that property.
That's the property. It owns all this property.
Well, the right of way is 50 feet. That was your question, right?
Mike, my question was if it extends beyond the paved areas there.
I would say it probably does.
Extends beyond which paved area?
The lower portion of it.
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that just sort of goes in.
Who paved that?
I don't know.
Was there when you're, when the tenant?
Client purchased it, yes.
Kevin, you said 50 feet wide.
50 feet in width.
North to south.
This way.
Top to bottom, yeah, 50 feet in width.
By how far? How far is the other one?
Well, the total length is some 250-something feet.
That's a big piece of property.
225 feet.
And I imagine that you would fence it in. Am I correct?
I'm, possibly, some of it may be fenced. We'd have to have access both to the sewage authority, which has a line running down the middle, and we'd have to have access in the event that the water company wanted to do something with this water line, which runs along the curb, which is a curb now. So, we couldn't really fence it all the way to the...
So, what plans do you have for that property exactly?
We're building a large house here for the, that's important.
I understand that. But what plans do you have for the property that we were going to build here?
Probably none. Probably none. It would probably be grass, a lawn area, possibly a porch.
There's trees on that area. Are there any plans for the trees?
Well, we would fully landscape this property and hopefully keep all the trees that are able to be kept.
There's a water main that runs across the right of way now, and a sewer line. Fred might run out and look at it. It's marked out. So, they would not be able to build on top of that one of the length.
No, we can't. We cannot build above the top of the sewer line. We can, we are allowed.
I'm sure they would fence the property line.
Yeah. We're, well, we could fence the whole property line, but we certainly couldn't fence over the sewer easement. We are permitted to do some fencing for the water company. They permit fencing, and they permit some paving for parking. There's no construction over their easement, and as I said, their easement runs along the curb line practically at the present time. So, we would just plan to incorporate it into our property, landscape it, develop it, and it becomes a...
So, where would be the front lawn in?
The front of the house?
Mm-hmm.
Probably still going to face Bauer, still.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? This would be developed into a larger house, probably with a tennis court and a swimming pool. This would be the side of the property. What our original plan was is to build and then come and ask for a variance, because we would have that 30 or 40-foot setback requirement, because this is considered a front yard because it is a street. So, if it's no longer a street, then it becomes our side yard. And then it would, but property, the property's owned by the sewer, they own quite a bit of the, that property, the sewage authority. That's not developed. It's just, I don't know. Quite a bit of the law, further on, I believe.
So, is that the administration's recommendation to do this?
Administration has no recommendation. We wanted to discuss it. Joy suggested it goes on the agenda for you. You folks are happy to circulate it to the department heads and get your input.
I mean, I guess my question with due respect is why, why didn't we do this?
That was my question.
As Kate just pointed out, it's 11, it's a large, it's a property.
Yeah. It's really almost...
11,500...
But the city doesn't plan to develop it, as far as I'm aware.
It's an open, it's a nice open area above the lake.
Right.
And it's ours.
Correct.
Maybe want to sell it to them.
That's a legal question for Mr. Aaron.
Well, if any municipal property that's put up for sale cannot be put up for sale for less than the appraised value, so the assessor would have to go out and appraise the property, if that was your wish, and then you would have to declare that the city has no interest to develop the property, and then put it up for auction, and the highest bidder would get it. And in reality, the only people that would be interested in buying it would either be the sewage authority, who bought one side of it, or the Dianes, who own the other side of it, because it goes just between those two properties. Yeah. If it were to be vacated, which is when you just give it up and it would go to both property owners equally, it would increase the assessed value of the adjacent property. So, the city would certainly be, it would be advantageous in order to collect the higher taxes from the property also.
But would we not, John, would we not lose the tax ratable on the house that's going to be demolished? And then they would put the pool, and they would put the tennis courts. That probably would not equal the improvement on the property.
I'm not sure the difference in the new structure versus what's presently there now. I need more information.
He would need plans to...
Yeah. Well, you know, the other route would be to go to the zoning board adjustment, and I guess that we'd be permitted to come closer to the front yard, because there's, in reality, no front here. We don't want a front of property that way. We have three front yards, which is a difficult lot to develop. So, we thought that by vacating the street, it would be an advantage both to the city and to the property owner.
What's the setback you would need?
I believe it's...
If you have the three front yards. Carl?
40 feet.
40 feet. I believe it's 40 feet.
40 feet? And what are you looking at now as your setback if you build a new house?
Well, it would still probably be 40 feet or 35 feet from the center line.
From the new one?
From the new central line, which would permit this. Otherwise, we'd have to come and ask for a variance, because they would probably want to build, you know, this is, it's a relatively narrow lot for a larger structure. And so, that would be a requirement. We would, you know, we would prefer to expand the size of the lot and spread it out. Again, we're not anticipating coming much closer than 35 feet from the central line, but that's different than the side yard requirement.
Are there any other houses along the lake there that will go down that far? Because right now, it looks like the properties on that are equal, and there's nothing going down closer to the lake.
Correct.
Yeah. I agree with that, yeah.
I think that, you know, that, I'm not thrilled about that.
They would follow that setback line from the street that was there.
Right.
You remove that, that would change that.
That whole thing.
Yeah. Good point.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure what benefit the city gets out of this.
I don't know of any benefits. That would be for Mr. Steinberg to explain to you. I don't, I don't think there is a benefit to the city.
Well, that's a good-sized piece of property.
It's a good-sized piece of property that is on, you know, basically a park in the lake, so you'd be, you know, giving that up.
It's a beautiful place to make a beautiful park.
Yeah, and in the future, that may be something you may consider. I don't know.
The 50 percent of it will still remain in its current condition. So, we're talking when you vacate it, you'll only vacate half of it. So, it becomes a 25-foot wide piece of property. The rest of it would be maintained in its current state and be owned by the sewage authority.
So, you're not asking them to vacate the entire right of way?
Well, I think that they have to. I think a vacation requires that the street be eliminated from the, from the records of the town, and then 50 percent goes to the adjacent property on either side. If there were more property owners, then the entire parcel would be divided up. Turns out to be, we own this whole piece, and the sewage authority owns most of this. Sewer Authority owns 11 or 12 acres now, I believe. Yeah, something like that.
I'd like to see assessment of the property before we do anything, what it's worth, from John, from these people. I think that we, right now, I'm not a big fan of doing this.
You'd like an assessment of the right of way, the value of the right of way or value of the...
Yeah, the property he wants us to vacate.
Sure.
I think that would give us a better idea of, you know, the land we're giving up.
Yeah. In the current property assessment on both properties, one is, I believe, about 213,000, and the other is about 200 and something thousand. And that property is, the property that we're being asked to vacate is equivalent almost to either of the houses. I think one is about 3.5 of an acre, and the other is like 3.1 of an acre. And the property you're asking us to vacate there is 23 of an acre.
Is it .3 or is it half of .3?
I'm sorry?
Is it .3 or half of .3?
Of an acre?
Yeah.
.3. It's 11,000...
The entire area is .3, but I'm saying what would be vacated and then next to this property would only be 50 percent of that.
Well, reading what I'm being asked to vacate, it's 11,449 feet, which is three, three tenths of an acre.
I understand. I'm just trying to point out that if it is vacated, only 50 percent of that would go for property. The other 50 would be, would...
I understand.
Be turned over to the sewage authority.
John, would it be fair to say that if the property, if it's an equivalent property size, that it would probably comparable to about 200,000 if those two properties are about 200,000, 213, 205?
If they were shaped similarly, I would say yes, but because you have less frontage, I don't know that a vacated lot could be built upon.
It would be an unbuildable lot, because it's a 50-foot frontage, and it would be purchased after the fact, basically, so I think it would be very difficult to make a case in front of your zoning board to develop a 50-foot, 200-foot, 250-foot. I think that would be, you know, as I said, advantageous to everyone to have it developed, because it seems to end here, and there's no point for the city to continue the street.
But it's well directed.
Okay, so we are going to have to take this into consideration. Does anyone have any more questions before we move on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Someone want to let us know?
I will.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll be in touch.
You soon?
Thank you.
I'll get you a memo on the various alternatives that you have legally, and you can let us know. I will hand out check out.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Sid Johnson for our tax ordinance.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Sid Johnson, the director for the Long Branch City Health Department, and we're here to continue the discussion on the amendments to the Animal Control Ordinance 109. So, after the presentation given several weeks back, Mr. Aaron and I worked to develop the amended ordinance, and the amended ordinance, I think you've seen it. What happens is there's several things that it does. One is it allows us to address nuisances, public nuisances, specifically caused by cats that affect neighbors or other people, and so it's a nuisance ordinance, okay? Before, we could talk to people and try and educate with them and work with them, but we could not, we really couldn't resolve it. This gives us a tool to resolve those disputes and, you know, take care of it. The other thing it does is it encourages vaccination, rabies vaccination of cats. We do that with dogs. It encourages that. If they do license their cats, we can then, if the cat is strays or something like that, we have a way to follow that cat and get that cat reunited with its owner. And lastly, the last thing it does is, there is a, let's see if I can remember the last thing it does. Well, that's pretty much it, I think. Maybe there's some questions you want to ask, and, oh, there is a cap. That's the last point. There would be a cap. It would not become effective, a cap on the number of cats that people could have. It does not become effective for, you know, we proposed four years and a day. You could make it longer. We proposed a limit of nine, a cap of nine cats. That could be, you know, if you desire to change that, to lower it, to increase it. We're really not taking people's cats. It's not a population control type of ordinance. It's not a no-feed ordinance or feral cot colonies or trap neuter release, which are, those three things are all aimed at population control, sort of. No, this is really a nuisance-based ordinance and the other items that I said.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Why four years? I think four years is ridiculously long.
Okay, I understand that, and that's, that's one of the things that's, you know, to the elected officials to decide. We wanted to give it a length of time. We don't want people to think that we're going to be out there, you know, you can have your cats now, you can keep your cats. We didn't want to be, people had this idea that we were going to be trapping cats and, you know, kind of exterminating them or what. That's not the issue. We wanted people to know they could keep their cats. We would work with them and with the idea that out at some point in the future, there would be a cap on the number of animals. We think that's better for Long Branch with the redevelopment and everything you're trying to do in the town here. So, we wanted some time to work with people, and that's why we put this, you know, a period of time there, but it's flexible. You can change it, the period of time, if you want to move it up, that's fine with us.
Also, you talk about that if a person feeds feral cats, they become the owner, which means they have to license them and get rabies shots. How is that going to be enforced?
Okay, well, that goes to the, one of the main points is maintenance and harborage and care of animals. So, we have private residences that people have, you know, the residents maintain cats, and they can create a nuisance in the neighborhood. The same way, we do know that we have colonies of cats in the city of Long Branch, and if those colonies would become a nuisance, all right, to the public, either the neighbors nearby, or maybe if they're in a parking lot and they're, you know, the public is somehow being threatened, that would, we can identify an owner for those colonies. And we're saying the owner of that colony is the person who maintains by feeding those cat colony. That colony would not exist in that area if there wasn't somebody feeding them and providing some kind of care, because in the normal scope of things, the animals would disperse on their own. They wouldn't congregate in one area, except for the fact that people are feeding them, and then you have the overpopulation issue. So, that's why we put that in there, so we can identify an owner, and then we can address it with the owner. It may be the property owner, but it may be somebody else who's just put the cats there and is maintaining the cats on this property. That may not even be their own property. It could be city property. It could be another person's private property, so...
So, once you identify that owner, then that owner has to get a license for those cats and get them all rabies?
That's right, and they're subject to, you know, we will talk to them. We're going to have a velvet glove kind of approach, you know? We're not going to be heavy-handed, but if we cannot come to some kind of satisfactory resolution where you maintain those cats, where they're not creating a nuisance, then we would have to have enforcement.
And my last question is $100 for each offender. So, you're saying they could get fined $100, and then they say, okay, I'll pay them. What's $100? I'll pay it. I'm going to do the same thing over again, and a couple of months down the road, maybe they'll get me for another 100. Why isn't it increasing fine?
That's in line with, I believe, the penalties and fines for the dog part of the animal ordinance. We didn't ask for any increase in fines or anything like that, but what happens in that case, and I think it's kind of typical of law enforcement, where you have repeat offenders and so forth, then you approach the judge and the prosecutor, and the idea is basically we want you to maintain those animals, whether it be on your property, and that's what we're really talking about, fenced in on your property, something like that, so that they're not becoming a nuisance to the public at large.
We might want to index the general provisions ordinance, Jim.
We do.
Of municipal court, as far as fines go, but the first fine, 100, and let the court decide, they have to balance the fines.
We do. We, and any other violation of this article should be punishable, as provided in Chapter 1, General Provisions, where I call...
There you go.
So, you've got exclamation provisions.
So, that would answer your question.
Okay. Thank you.
So, would it be fair to say that you're basically putting a toolkit or something in place so that you can address this?
That's how we look at it, exactly. It gives us a tool.
Which right now, we don't have.
That's right. We've tried to do the best. The animal control officers have tried to do their best when they've been involved in these kind of situations. They've had some limited success, but then things have fallen back, and basically, we don't have anything to hang our hat on. So, this gives us something that we can, you know, we have that tool in the toolbox.
And you have met with a few people who've like come before council and so forth. Does everyone seem to agree that this is the way to do this?
Yes, we, well, we've had it reviewed by our animal control officers, had this, after it was drafted, we had it reviewed by animal control people in other towns in Monmouth County, who, this is their business, and they said that this will work for us. We gave it out to, shared it with some of the people, the public, specifically some of the people who were directly involved in this, who's had problems. So, we believe firmly that it's going to be able to help us in those situations where it's needed.
I think you'll get that answer.
Kate, would you like to suggest a timeframe for the cap?
Well, I, you know, I don't think, how many people actually have more than nine cats?
I don't really know, but there, I mean, when you get up in...
I mean, I understand you don't want to go in and say, okay, as of tomorrow, you've got to get rid of four of those cats. I understand you want to, but I think four years just tends to be a long time.
And that's fine. I mean, that's...
That's my opinion, but...
That was my opinion, but your collective wisdom is probably going to be greater than mine.
Could you do it, could you do it in six months? Could you educate the public in six months?
We could. I think we, if people will know.
Make it a year.
A year. Yeah, I think a little longer would be, I think, in search, here's my opinion, if you want my opinion. In those circumstances where we will be involved and we end up, people have to confine that whatever number of animals, cats they have on their own property, there will be a natural, they will, over time, not replenish it and have as many cats as they've had in the past, because, you know, if you have 15, 20 cats running around in your yard, and you have to pick up after them and do all the other things, take the food in, you're going to get tired after a while, and I think you're going to say, you know, maybe six or seven cats would be just as friendly, and I can take care of them better.
That's why you basically...
Does everyone...
Yes, we do want, you know, every cat we bring into the SPCA is $250, so it's a budgetary thing. The other thing is the SPCA has a governor on us. They have a restriction of only two cats a month. So, we tried, when we drafted this ordinance, there was a couple of things. We tried to work within the parameters that we presently operate under as a department, staffing, finances, all the others. The other thing was that we didn't want people to think that we were just going to round up cats and, you know...
And four years, basically, the flock will wither down by itself.
I, that's our expectation, yes. And if it doesn't, that's okay, too, as long as they keep their animals where they're not creating a nuisance, we'll live and let live.
So, if someone had 10 indoor cats, they're not a violation?
No.
Four years and a day from now?
Right.
Dr. Selly, ask a question?
A license. You've got to put it around the cat's neck?
Yes, it's the same, well, it's the same tag. We use the same tag as the, as the dogs use, exactly. So, however, they maintain it. A lot of people have the chips now and so forth, so that we use, you know...
My concern is that the cat, you know, cats jump all over the place, and perhaps[1733.54] they could strangle themselves.
I've heard that, yes. There are other, if you want us to look at other mechanisms, there's other mechanisms.
Oh, I-
Collar, you think?
But doesn't it say, the proof of license says they have to have a tag secured or be able to show proof that the dog and cat is licensed? So they don't have to wear a collar?
No, that's right. When we get involved, that's true. You have a good point there.
So what would be the alternative way to show the license? To just-
The microchip, if you document a microchip, we have the readers, the animal control officers have the readers, so they can check. And then you find out the company and you call them and they'll tell you who the owner is and the address and all that.
Okay, good.
And the dog ordinance, do you restrict the number of dogs that people can have?
There is a number on the dogs. It's up, I think if you get to 10, you have to get a kennel license.
Okay, so there is a restriction?
Right.
Okay.
That was the reason, I believe you put the number nine on it as well.
That was our thinking, but it turns out that there is a difference under the state view of dogs and cats. And so, there is no statutory, like, where you would need a kennel license if you went to 11 cats or something. But, we did come up with that. That followed, our thinking was, we followed what we did with the dogs.
Now, if you have indoor cats, I think Mike will ask the question, if we have, let's say we have 10 indoor cats.
They're not creating a nuisance? That's fine.
Okay.
It's a nuisance that triggers the violation of the ordinance?
All right, okay.
They're not going to be riding up and down the street counting cats if the complaints come from them?
Right. And we set that, we, the licensing part, we set the fees at, we did a survey of all the towns in Monmouth County. We chose the lowest fees, $3 for spade and neuters, $5. So there's no financial gain really to the town, but it wasn't going to cost us a lot either because you have a dog licensing program that can, we can automatically just add cats. So there really was not a lot of extra work.
If I, if I come in, I hate when people play what if, but we're going to play. I come in, I register license, 12 of my cats, they're indoor cats. Is that going to set off a red flag from, who does the licensing?
You?
Who does, is that going to set off a red flag?
No.
You mean the cat police are going to check your house?
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not what this is about. They probably, when people have these multiple large numbers of animals, I'll bet you animal control probably knows 90% of them already, because they're in town all the time. So they, they know the people.
But I'm talking if I had indoor cats and-
No, it's not going to be an issue with us.
So Mr. Johnson, just out of curiosity, if a, let's say somebody's feeding a colony of feral cats, right, and then they stop, right? So what happens to those cats typically?
They're going to be searching for food because they're, and they may not, they're going to, you're going to find a good number, they're probably going to get bopped by cars, which is what happens. I mean, it's, it's a hard life for those animals. It's, they're going to be scraping by to try and either get in the garbage or something like that, because, you know, what they stop feeding them. But there's, the problem with the feeding is twofold, is that you're going to have a overpopulation in that area of where you wouldn't have. And the other thing is, lots of, if they're not careful about feeding, you're attracting wildlife too. And then when you get the cats and the wildlife together, some, there would be rabies, it's, it's, we've actually had specimens in October that turned out positive, a raccoon and a groundhog. So there is rabies. We know that in the wildlife at a very low level, but it's there. So when you mix cats and, you know, just like any domestic animal with the wildlife, there's a possibility the cats could get, develop rabies too.
After looking at the statistics that you gave us about the cats and rabies last couple of months ago.
Right.
I was really amazed at how many cats do, you know-
And the thing is, the dog population, because of the licensing and it's been forever, they're very well vaccinated. The cats, if you have domestic cats, you're probably, your vet is giving them. But when we talk about the colonies, it's very hard. First, you might get the first shot, but it's hard to re-trap these animals time and time again. They get very smart and crafty and know it's a trap and you're not going to catch them. Maybe you're lucky twice, but it's, they're hard after that.
Does anyone have any more questions? Can we, we can move on to the animal agenda.
Does it just get like, explain that they can address that public?
I could do that. If anyone does have any questions, thank, the public can address this at our regular council meeting at 7:30. There will be a public portion and that's when questions may be asked.
Thank you, I'll stay for that.
Did you want us to prepare the ordinance for introduction at the next meeting? I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
Would you also, President, perhaps, have Mr. Johnson, for the balance of this meeting, speak to people in advance of the public meeting so that he can get an idea of what the public is thinking or those that are here?
Yes, that would be good.
And did you want that changed, four-year changed to one-year?
No.
No?
Mr. Johnson, would you be willing to speak to anyone who has questions in that four-year area?
Sure, right outside.
If anyone has any questions that they'd like to address to Mr. Johnson, you may go out.
He does.
Okay. All right, we have, the next discussion is going to be with Stan Zutat for each, regarding our beach item, various beach items.
Good evening.
I'm the technical advisor.
What bodyguard?
You don't have a permit.
I requested to come before you tonight to try and expedite the items that we need for the 2017 beach season. Last couple of years, we've done it with the capital and a little bit later, so things didn't come in on time or weren't able to do anything. So I just want to go over a list of items that we are requesting and get your feedback on. Everybody have this paper out. The first thing that we're requesting is to rent two trailers for the beach office and for the lifeguard office. They're an eight-foot by 28-foot trailer, one that would go down in place on the beach. The rental company would come in, work with DPW, we would set them up, they would put them in place and then take them out at the end of the year. And totally their responsibility throughout the season to maintain them, whatever went wrong. The ones that we have now are currently not in the best of shape. They were from the Board of Education. DPW had gotten for us quite a few-
What's the current sizes?
The current sizes that we have now, just about the eight by 28 that we're requesting now, almost the same exact thing, yes. The one trailer-
Fred, do you know the size of the, which one we got?
It may be 30, it may be two foot longer. But the two that we have here and I have-
Are they large enough?
Yes, yeah. We, we were going to go larger, but when we went, we decided to go larger with one trailer. The cost for the crane to put it in place, everything was astronomical and we didn't feel it was necessary. And I got together with Dan George and Mr. Riley and we talked about it. And we go with the beach office on one side. I can pass this around if you want, but basically, this is the trailer, has the size for the beach office on one side to sell and then it has a separate office that we can do the accounting of the money and all that. And then the same thing with the lifeguard, it would have the AMT side and then it would have the command staff side with the lifeguard captain and the beach manager and everything like that. The cost for both of them is, for the season would be $6,479. That's for both trailers. They would put them in, and this is an extra month added in, since we're doing this for the first time, we want to know how they wanted the rigging and all that. So we gave ourselves an extra month to get in, so we could do it. Next year would even be a little bit cheaper. They would, like I said, they would come in, work with TPW, set them in place, they would tie them down. Anything went wrong as far as air conditioning or doors, anything like that, they would repair it throughout the season and no cost to us.
This will help with your maintenance.
And it would help, yes, it would help with our maintenance and all that. We don't have to worry about the painting and all that. They take them out at the end of the year, they store them, they do all the repairs on them. And if we run them again next year, they bring the same exact same-
Where are you planning on putting them, same place?
That's up in the air, depending on what happens with Phase Three. If they not develop, we could go there. If not, we wanted to go in front of the Washington Manor building, because there's no east-facing property right in there and we could get both trailers in the area without any blocking any line of sight or anything like that. But we looked at both locations.
And that would be on the sand as well?
On the sand. The beach-
But the sand plan is to put it up at the same level of the boardwalk.
Yeah.
So beach badges?
The badges would be up, this lifeguard trailer would be down. Just the same thing that we had last year with the walkway, where people could come off the boardwalk, buy the badge. And Kevin and I had an idea too, where we could put it, possibly put it right against the boardwalk, we don't have to touch the railing or nothing. It would be high enough so we don't have to do anything, damage or anything like that to the railing or-
Now, you're going to build the deck?
Going to build the deck around it, yes. Going to build the deck around it, yes. And, you know, so they can come in and-
But you said Washington Manor, you told it on their property or?
No, totally on the east side of the boardwalk.
It's all on our-
Yes, yes. This company currently has trailers in Belmar, I think it's Bradley Beach, Seabright. So that, we went around to different companies and they were the cheapest to use and most cost-effective and, you know, they seem like a good deal now. Any questions on the trailers? I already know you guys got some time constraints, I'm trying to just run through this.
Could you just briefly say that Washington Manor is definitely-
Yes, Washington Manor, Mr. Beckelman and Carl had gotten together, Turner had gotten together and stuff with them and I believe, you see, the legal aspect of it was just outrageous to do. And we're just as happy speaking with the beach staff and the beach manager and myself, we're just happy to be on the beach. We're at, and we like the idea and the overall picture of everything. We can run our operation out of what we got there and we're fine with it.
If you can.
Okay, next item would be purchase of two Kubotas. They are six-seaters. Currently, we have three vehicles, well, we have two left. We had two 2006 Kubotas and one 2009 Kawasaki. The Kawasaki was the only four-seater. The one Kubota's already been sent out. It was purchased through the auction because it was totally shot. The set, the other two are in very bad shape. I want to get the Kubotas rather than the Honda that we bought last year, because we had bought the Honda for the lifeguards. Kubotas only do 35 miles an hour. What they're going to be used for basically is the transportation of not only equipment, but throughout the day with the security staff, it's a transportation for the handicap people, get them around. I don't want anything that went over 35 miles an hour, because sometimes a younger person will be driving it even though they're qualified. And I didn't want to get into that speed level. Plus, the Kubotas have bench seats, so I can get actually the driver, a lot of times we have family with a personal wheelchair to base in the back, the bin, they can put the wheelchair in there and take the whole family down to the area, because a lot of times the family have to walk with everything there. So we're trying to get a little bit more friendlier on that, because we have a big business and a big following as far as what we do as far as the handicap, with the ward of wheelchairs and regular wheelchairs and stuff like that. So we're actually, I want to take the three that we have, we only have two currently, take them out of service and put two newer ones in with more, more ability.
Can we go to the next item? I'm sorry, we, we didn't have time here.
The next item would be the purchase of 10 more cabanas. Currently have 35, I'd like to go to 45. We already have all 30 requested that we sold last year and we have a waiting list right now, about another nine, I believe it is. So that will give us a couple more extra in case people come along as we go. So that would be the next item.
Where will we put them?
I have room for five more that are going to go on the Great Lawn. And then another five down at either Cottage or West End. We told, Shannon had told the people that, you know, we wanted to get together, we want to put five units and then the shower tower. We don't want to put one here and one there and every, depending on where, I have to go down with Mr. Migliaccio, take a look at the electric, see what's the best place to put them. And the purpose is just to put them either Cottage Avenue Beach or the Bright, or the West End Avenue Beach, depending on what works out better.
Okay.
And we may even, if we don't have the five, I believe the five are already requested at the Great Lawn, we could even put 10 down south, but I'm pretty sure that the five are already requested. She has a list and people call on every day and when we're going to be able to get it. And then if it works out, you know, we need a few more and then next year maybe we'll come in front of you and say, you know, gee, it's working out well, let's put another 10 in. But right now, I think 10 would be a safe bet.
Okay, and the next item, I do have a question about, what is a mini bard?
Okay, a mini bard, basically, we have the life-
Is it barn or barn?
We have barn.
The idea is barn, but it's-
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you, yeah, if you, if you look alongside of it, you'll see where it says, says barn. This is basi, this is basically it. It's to replace the lifeguard sheds that we have, is what they are. Lifeguard sheds are from 2000, they're eight by eight. We have 11-foot-five boards now, rescue boards, so we have no place to put them. So we need the bigger ones, they're in horrible condition and-
But you can fit a barn in there.
And that's where, you could fit a, you could fit a barn there too. So that's, and there's 12. We have the, I know we have 17 beaches, but we have bigger equipments and we only need 12 of that. We have bigger sheds, okay?
Thank you.
And, we're not done. Sorry. You know what, we'll talk about this at another time, the signage, we'll talk about it another time. The last thing-
Do you want us to approve that entire package tonight ahead of the budget?
Yes.
We're looking for that and Lieutenant Shirley has one more component.
Yes.
Well, no, he's not on the agenda, he can't be on that.
The security cameras, the security cameras for the beach.
It would just be same as we've done on the new structures that we did through the FEMA structures. We would replicate that at InPier Village on top, right, just south of where McLugge's is, in that area there, so we can look at what the ticket takers and stuff there. And then also at the bandshell down there to put the same amount of cameras in. So every spot we had would have five cameras and one adjustable, so we can actually watch what's happening with the ticket takers, watch the bathrooms. We've already had vandalism twice and it was, it was some pretty serious stuff this, two weeks ago. We didn't have cameras on them. So we're just looking at taking what we currently have and just following it down and we'll have the whole promenade covered, have exactly what we have in the other sections.
And what's cost?
It's $30,000 for each, so 60 total, so 30 for each, each location.
Has anyone spoken to you about possibly including Cherry Street?
They, they did and I'm-
I spoke to, I spoke to Lieutenant about that, but that's going to be a separate project. We can certainly come back to you for that, but there's issues with Cherry Street of where to put them. We have to draw a poll and network nodes.
It's an infrastructure issue. These we can just throw in place.
We're happy to look at that, to do that as we move forward, but we wanted to get the beach operation set to you so you can consider it and give my direction of if you want to do or how you want to look at it.
Do we have the money in this year's budget or is this next year's budget?
No, it's going to go in next year's budget. There's got to be some tweaking also. You can't really put the rentals as a capital item, it's an operating item, so that'll go into his regular operating budget.
With the trailers?
Trailers.
Trailers, right. Yeah, you got to tweak the gazebos a little bit, because you talked about shower towers, you don't have many prices for that.
I don't need any.
You don't need any, you have enough?
I have enough.
Okay, that's good. But we just have to determine at the end of the year for next year's budget, whether we're going to bond it or run it through a capital line item, so.